And everyone on. Good evening, everyone here and everyone on Zoom. We apologize for canceling the special meeting today, but due to illness, there would only be three of us. And that was a really productive, helpful thing we did last year. And we thought it would be worthwhile to wait till we could all be party. So this is the regular meeting at 6 o'clock. I think we have to do a roll call before the pledge, right? Since someone's on Zoom?
Yeah, sure. So Councilmember Reardon.
Here on Zoom.
Councilmember Syrick.
Present.
Mayor Gunsmann.
Here.
Councilmember Feist.
Here.
And Councilmember Swift is absent.
Can you all join me for the Pledge of Allegiance? That takes us to the public forum. At this time, the public is permitted to address the City Council on items not appearing on the agenda. Comments may not exceed five minutes. In accordance with state law, however, no action or discussion may take place on any item not appearing on the posted agenda. The City Council may respond to statements made or questions asked, or may request staff to report back at a future meeting on the matter. Would anyone care to address the council on an item not on the agenda?
Mike Kirkley, 172 Badger Street. In a previous meeting, I was concerned about sight distance on Main Street because of parking space there. And I recently became aware of a fisheye mirror that was posted on the right side. And while looking at it, I almost pulled out in front of somebody else and got tagged again. So if that's your solution, I don't know if those are legal for city streets. I'm not sure. I was not informed that I think I'm the only complainant that has sight distance problems on Badger. I would hope that the chief of police would have gone and evaluated the conditions at the intersection. I don't know if that was done or not, and I don't know if that's a good solution to your problem. My concern is the city could have some liability. There's a state law, you have to have 20 feet of clearance at all crosswalks. I don't know if that's been done. Doesn't seem to be a high priority. I do want it on the public record that I've complained about it a couple of times. If there's any accidents there, I think you might have some liability. Thank you.
Anyone else care to address the council on an item not on the agenda? Hearing nobody will move on to.
City manager.
City managers' report.
Yeah, so again, we had planned to have a strategy planning session today, so we kept this agenda very short, but I did want to give you guys a few updates. First of all, in the mirror, yeah, we did review that with the police chief. We are interested in feedback, though, and so we note your comment and definitely interested in what other people think of that approach. Couple of other things. We've had a long outstanding connection fee dispute, I guess, with Ramco. Just wanted to announce to council that that's been resolved. We've signed an agreement and they are making payments to catch up on that. We also got our housing element approved by HCD, which is great. It was due four years ago, so we're four years through the eight-year process. And we do need to show progress against some of the programs and policies on that element. There is kind of a four-year check-in. But I believe, you know, HCD is kind of behind on a lot of things, so I'm not too worried about Sutter Creek, but just so you're aware. And then yeah, the last one is we're recruiting for the local sales tax oversight committee. We put out a notice in the newsletter. We'll be getting out word as well. And council members, if you guys want to send me a couple of names each as well, we're basically assembling a list of people interested in serving on that committee. And that's it for me.
Thanks, Tom. Did you guys have any questions for Tom?
Yeah, excuse me. I just had a quick question on the INI and how that's going. Are we feeling like we?
So we're hoping for more rain. We got all our meters in, so now we're just trying to collect data. Once the ground gets saturated, we were hoping we would have gotten more rain over the weekend. So the ground is wet, though, and if we get another storm, we should get some good data.
Anything else, public? Takes us to item five. I'm going to skip the item numbers now. Approval of minutes from January 21st.
I move we approve the minutes as submitted.
Second. All in favor? You have to do a roll call. Dan's online.
Yeah, Councilmember Feist.
Aye.
Mayor Gunsmann.
Aye.
Councilmember Syrick.
Aye.
And Councilmember Reardon.
Aye.
It passes 4-0 with one absent.
Hey, on our consent agenda, we have an amendment to the city manager's employment agreement.
Madam Mayor, if I may make a statement before the council considers this item?
Yes, please.
So a state law requires that anytime our top executive has any sort of salary or benefit change, we provide an oral report of the economic effect of that change. So I think I talked to you all about the City of Bell scandal. It's been several years. I've actually had to tell people to Google that. If I mentioned Bell, maybe 10 years ago, everyone would know what it is. But there were a series of changes to the California codes, especially relating to executive compensation. And one of them says that we have to orally report, not just provide a staff report or put something in the agenda packet like we normally do, but we have to orally report on the economic impact of our manager, any increase in our executives' positions. So I just want to put on the record that what is before the council is an amendment to the city manager employment agreement. And what this does is addresses a leave, not a leave, a housing allowance that the city manager received as part of his original agreement. So under the original agreement, the city manager received $2,500 a month for the first 12 months of his employment. That was characterized as a loan, and the loan was repayable beginning upon the third year of the manager's employment. But there is language in the employment agreement that suggests the council may, at that point, choose to waive some or all of the housing allowance. And this is something that is often included in manager contracts, and the idea is that you want to incentivize someone, obviously, to move to the area, but also to develop some longevity. And so that's how the agreement currently reads. What is before the council, and just so we do the report properly, is that our manager did take those $12, $2,500 monthly payments for a total of $30,000. So he has received that money. What this item proposes to do is take $15,000 of that money he has received, the equivalent of six months of the housing allowance, and basically make that, forgive that at this point, meaning the city manager would not have to repay that. So what that means is that he is effectively being relieved of $15,000 of a loan obligation. And so that would be the first economic impact that we need to disclose. And then the second impact is that for the next 12 months, so our city manager began employment in November, so we would go back to last November, and for the 12 months that start in November going forward until this end of October of this year, the city manager will receive $1,250 a month, or $15,000 if he is employed for the full 12-month period. But unlike the previous housing allowance, this would not be a loan. This would simply be a housing payment. So the net effect is that it will increase his salary by $1,250 a month, or $15,000 for the year. And I mentioned salary. I need to clarify, it would increase his overall compensation. It would not increase his salary. His salary would stay the same. The housing allowances are not treated as perceval, so we don't calculate those when we calculate our per's benefits. So I just wanted to make sure that orally we reported all of that out and that there is a record of that. I'm happy to answer any questions the council has, but otherwise, the matter, you will need to take public comment, of course, but the matter would then be before you for your approval.
Thank you, Derek. Counsel, did you have any questions on that?
We, I think, kind of beat this one up for a couple of months, and it's nice to see it all spelled out. Thank you, Derek.
Dan?
No comments.
Anyone from the public care to comment?
Mike Kirkley, 172 Badger, Sutter Creek. Very disappointed in the city council. This was on the consent agenda, I know. I'm surprised you're even letting me comment. The decision's already been made, but I find it very difficult to swallow that we are paying a city manager in Sutter Creek, the little town of Sutter Creek, $170,000 a year, and in addition to that, giving him a housing allowance, and he doesn't even live in the community. He's had no city manager experience when you hired him. I'm not saying Tom's not a bright guy and can manage things well. But if you look at the compensation package for any other city managers in Amador County and adjoining cities, I think you'll find for our size of our city, he's way overcompensated. And my concern now is you're adding a housing allowance onto his package for at least one more year, if not longer. He's negotiated this. Tom's a great negotiator. He's negotiated a pretty sweet package for a little city like Sutter Creek, and he has raised, helped you raise the sewer rates, got a sales tax increase and increasing revenue, but he's benefiting directly from that for his salary and benefits. And I'm ashamed of the city council for what you've done.
Thank you, Mike. Anyone else? Mike's left, so there's no need to respond to his comments. If there's nothing else, I'd entertain a motion. I'll make a motion to approve. There's a motion in a second. Tom, can you do a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Syrick.
Aye.
Councilmember Reardon.
Aye.
Mayor Gunsmann.
Aye.
And Councilmember Feist.
Aye.
That takes us to the public hearing. Want to introduce it, Tom?
I think Derek.
Yes, so thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. So this next item is a two-fold item. The main item is a schedule of rate increases for the solid waste services that the city receives. Recently, we went through the transfer of ownership from ACES, which was a longstanding community company that provided waste service for our city and for other cities and the county. And ACES has recently sold to Republic, which is a nationwide provider of waste services. We have a franchise agreement for waste services, and we have a four-year schedule of rate increases that may be considered. And I just want to quickly outline for the council and the public. We start off with a detailed rate analysis. Let's call that year zero. So this is an accounting analysis that, and I'm not an accountant, so I know some of the Republic folks are here, and they may be able to explain this a little better, but it looks holistically at the cost factors in the solid waste industry, and it provides a detailed, as the name implies, review of the rates, and it proposes adjustments. So then what we do from there is we set the rates based on that detailed rate review, and then we go and we have, that takes effect in year one. And then we have in year, at the start of year two, and at the start of year three, and at the start of year four, we have basically a CPI adjustment, if you will. Now CPI is the Consumer Price Index, but all of us understand that there is inflation. And of course, we went through a pretty big spike in inflation a couple of years ago. That's something that we call the CPI. There is a CPI for the waste industry, and that is known as the refuse rate index. And it looks at the cost factors that are unique to that industry. And again, the folks who are likely in the audience can tell you much more than I can, but you have, I would assume fuel is a big part of that, because you have these large trucks that, you know, go around our city and collect all the waste. And so they have cost factors that are different. And so what we provide for are the automatic increases that are set by this RRI formula, beginning year two, beginning year three, and beginning year four, and then the process starts all over. So where we are is that in 2024, I always say ACES, Republic did a detailed rate review, and that led to the rates that you see before you. Those are the rates that are necessary to allow a reasonable return for the service to be provided going forward. And what we are doing here is, if you look at Exhibit A, you'll see on the second column, this is the current rate. So you'll see the rates that are being charged by currently. And then we go to the next column, which is the rates that will go forward into the next year. So those would take effect on March 1, and what we've done is we've kind of scrunched them up. So March to the end of December, they can charge the, we'll call them the 2025 rates. And then what we have done is we have accounted for the RRI increases in years two, years three, and years four. Those are the last three columns you see. And what we have done is we have set those rates at 10%. The idea being that we're probably not going to go higher than that. And what we, the reason why we have created this schedule is because we have to deal with the Proposition 218 piece. So many years ago, there was a dispute in our city about whether Proposition 218, which says that all property-related fees must be presented through what we call a majority protest proceeding. There was actually litigation, and we settled that litigation, I believe it was 2011, in which that litigation was settled, and we agreed we would follow Proposition 218. So we have done that now for nearly 15 years. And what Proposition 218 says is that when you raise solid waste rates, you have to provide a protest hearing. You have to give notice to every rate payer who pays the solid waste collection rates and give them an opportunity to protest. And if more than 50% of the rate payers lodge a written protest with our city, then we cannot approve the rate increase. We lose the ability. There is what is called a majority protest. And so it's a very streamlined and truncated popular approval. It's not a vote, per se. It's not like we're submitting this, like we just went through with our sales tax. We're not presenting it to the voters in that manner. But we do provide some sort of popular referendum, if you will. It's not technically a referendum, but a way of giving the public an opportunity to object. And it's a process that has been written into Proposition 218, which has been the law since 1996. And so what we're doing here is we are authorizing the new rates to go into effect starting on March 1. And then with the three subsequent years, we would authorize up to 10% for each year. But I want to emphasize that in those three years, Republic would only be able to receive whatever the RRI would be. So if we've authorized 10%, but the RRI says 4.2%, then we would only raise to 4.2%, that we would make them provide the RRI, and then we would adjust. So what we're doing is leaving some room so that we don't have to do this Prop 218 process, but once every four years. So we just did a detailed rate review. Now we're going to implement the new rates and leave us space so that we can do this, and we don't have to do this again until four years from now, when there is a new detailed rate analysis. So I can, I'm happy to answer any questions. I know that's very technical, but one point I want to leave the council with is that we have a second piece, which is a contract amendment, and this is something I will take the blame for, which is when we restated and re-upped our agreement, which we did about a year and a half ago with then ACES, we did not deal with the fact that the timing, we had a different rate schedule. And so ACES or Republic does their detailed rate review for the county at the same time they do it for us, and that's been their practice. And so the way our contract was currently written is we were one year ahead, basically, of where they were with the county. And so what we have done here is just made a slight amendment to the agreement to correct that and put our city expressly on the same schedule as the county. So again, I'm very technical here. I'm happy to answer any questions, but what the council would do tonight is you would open a public hearing, and you would determine, is there a certain number of protests? And you need, I believe you need something akin of 900 or more. So I'm going to assume you don't have the number of protests. But we would open the public hearing, allow public comment. Anyone can submit a written protest before the hearing closes. And then once the hearing closes, if there's no majority protest, which I do not believe there will be, then you may approve this resolution, which would do two things. It would approve the rate schedule, and then it would approve that minor contract amendment. So I know I've given you a lot. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Derek, this is Dan. I have two questions, I guess.
Yes.
Thank you. I don't have the attachment A in front of me, but I think I remember the first column that you mentioned that goes into effect on March. I believe that's as a result of the detailed rate review, not the RRI. Is that correct?
Correct.
And it looks to me like that's about a 6% increase. Is that correct?
Yes.
And perhaps someone is there at some point who can just explain to us and to the community generally what accounted for that increase over last year. I'd like to hear something about that. Then, beyond that, it looks like the attempt was made, as you say, to just show a 10%, you know, highest it could be. But when I did the math in my head, it didn't look like the 10% started based off the March thing, the March rate. So I'm just asking that if somebody can look at that, and I noticed this when it was first presented to us last time, and I mentioned this then, the 10%, I certainly see it in the last couple of columns, and you can, you know, you do the math, and it's clearly 10% increase. But I don't see it from March to the following year, and I'm just confused about why.
I would have to defer to Republic on that.
Sure thing, yeah.
Well, let Republic answer that, but I did some backwards math, and I think that might be because the the new rate for the rest of this year is inflated because it got squashed together. So, yeah, the next year is 10% off of what that rate would have been as a true rate over 12 months. Does that make sense?
It should have gone to.
They're all nodding their head over here, too, Dan, but.
Okay, cool. Yes, I understand that. Thank you.
Let's go ahead and throw in the rest of our questions, either for Derek or you guys, and then you can answer them at once. Well, we'll open the public hearing, too. I just wanted a little bit of clarification on everything that you said, Derek. This is for you. You said that, you know, we can approve us raising the rates to this, and then we would not raise it more than 10% next year, next year, so on and so forth. But we aren't doing anything except for facilitating the 218 process. Is that right?
For this year, you would actually be.
No, I mean, we, like, wee-wee sitting here.
Yeah, yes. Yeah, what will have to happen is we would need to do a resolution next year, and then the two following years, once we get the RRI, to actually set the rate. But we would not have to do that with the 218 process. But this year, we are going to set what's in the fourth column, the new rate, March 1. So you will be, or you are proposed to approve what's in that fourth column, starting to be charged next month.
So to clarify, then, we will be voting, obviously, for the 218 for the public hearing, but we will not necessarily be approving beyond the 123125.
Correct. What you are doing is you are authorizing the 218 piece for those next three years so that as long as the rates, the rate increases don't exceed the rates stated in those three columns in those years, then what we would do is just simply an administrative item that would come to you as a simple resolution that you would adopt as a, you could do it on consent, or you can do it as regular business, but you would not have to do a 218 proceeding. So what ACES would do, under their agreement, they are required to submit the RRI information to our staff. Staff will review that, and then.
On an annual basis?
Yes, yes, correct.
That's what I understood. Okay, so we're not approving any increase technically beyond December 2025?
Correct. That's correct.
Okay.
And we're approving potentially allowing Republic to impose these increases. Again, they're not our increases.
Correct.
To me, that's important, only because looking at the new year, the new rate year one, from January 26 to December 26 is a 9%, and then it goes up to 10% for new rate year two, and another 10. So over the next four years, potentially, we could be looking at a 34% increase. So I just want to make sure we're not necessarily approving that. We're only approving the 5% at this point, right?
Correct. You are only technically approving the new rate that ends on December 31 of this year, and you will receive a RRI calculation for the next three years.
So an RRI calculation, just to be clear, is that good for, is just an annual?
Correct. It's an annual. So it's a.
Because I understood from reading that it's done every three years, from reading our agreement from last year.
Well, it's the, the 10% is a cap. So each year, according to the contract in Sutter Creek, we will approach the city, or Republic will approach the city, with computations about the next rate adjustment. And I don't know what, at this point, I don't, couldn't.
We can't.
Couldn't guess what it's going to be. Probably, I'll go out on a limb and say it's probably not going to exceed 10%. And it'll probably be likely to be less than that.
Okay, so the R, so just to be clear for a novice mind and all of this. Okay. So the R, so just to be clear for a novice mind in, in all of this, the RRI is done though annually. So this is just a predictive, this is just what the worst case scenario could be.
See, this, this, this rate adjustment was a, uh, a, a rate, what they call that, a detailed rate analysis, wasn't an RRI. But, I'm sorry, I'm having some hearing problems. If I'm speaking too loud, I apologize.
No, you're good. Good.
Um, the, the, uh, so the next. For all of these years, it'll be RRI. So it, you know, basically the, the index of cost. Cost of living that affects solid waste companies and we'll, we'll prepare the material when it's time, meet with the city manager and. Do that. But it's just an RRI, not, not a, not a detailed analysis.
That, the second question I had is mentioned in our agreement is an allowance for a potential fuel surcharge. Is that fuel surcharge separate from the increased percentage that we see here?
Yes.
So.
I don't, I don't, it is a separate from the rate adjustment and we won't. I mean, I think we would not implement it. I don't, I don't foresee that coming up at this point. But that, it's, it's separate.
So the, the fuel charge though is separate than what. It, it's not inclusive within what we see here.
The, 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 the RRI includes the price of fuel. The computations. So that, that the fuel surcharge itself. Is a separate thing from that, that ACES asked and received permission to implement several years ago. It's not being charged now. It's been.
Correct.
Under what circumstances could that charge be enacted?
Fuel surcharge was calculated quarterly.
That's, that's what I understand. So, um, I think Dan was going to ask my, my next question. Um. How is that then separate? I mean, what is the difference between the fuel chart, surcharge? That could be, and how is that determined whether it could be attached or not?
How does it end up being?
How, how is the decision made whether to have a fuel surcharge?
I think the, 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 I'll just use a decision making when it was under ACES because this, this has not occurred under Republic. Paul Malinelli Senior will answer that.
The surcharge is calculated quarterly.
I'll talk in the microphone. There's people online.
The search or fuel surcharge is calculated quarterly and, and. A figure is arrived at and it's put into the rates. When we do the rate calculations. Whether it's a RRI or the full detailed analysis, that revenue is deducted. So it negates whatever might be. In the RRI calculations to the extent the fuel surcharge is. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so the fuel charge though.
It's factored in at one point.
But it could be removed and still part of a, of an increase if a fuel surcharge is attached. It could be.
It's placed on the rates automatically, um, based on the calculation. And by the way, that's an up or down calculation and it has gone down in the past. That. That surcharge is considered when an RRI is submitted. That, that revenue generated by the surcharge will be factored in. To offset increased expenses.
So, so if I could, I think, I think what you're doing is you're, you're able to. React to fuel price increases much quicker rather than waiting a year, but then you credit it back essentially.
That was the point of the surcharge because we waited so long.
Right.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the council? Otherwise I'll open the public hearing.
Yeah, Claire, I just, I'd, I'd like to hear about this detailed rate. Evaluation that resulted in this increase right now coming up in March. What, what, what was that about? What, what kind of considerations?
Do you guys want to, so Dan's asking what the factors were in the detailed rate study that resulted in the. Five or 6% increase this year.
For us, for us to discuss the numbers. In that, we'd have to have paperwork in front of us. I, it's been. It's all numbers. I mean, you know, I don't remember them and I'm sure. Neither of the three of us or none of the three of us can answer specifically what expenses are in that. We did submit the, the, the information at one point and it was considered and discussed. But I can't, I can't answer what.
Can, can you tell me when your last rate increase was and what it, what it was?
Based on a detailed rate increase?
Yeah, I.
Was it 21, 22, 23, 24?
I, I, yeah, I, listen, we, you know, we, we do the, we have been doing these things for years, we have local jurisdictions, but for me personally, I remember when the. I.
I believe the last.
And I went back into our records and I couldn't.
I think the last rate adjustment was in, for Sutter Creek may have been. 2022.
Yep. A, and I'm not asking for a, a detailed line item by line item calculation that resulted in the new rate. I'm asking for a handful of items that were considered in that calculation. I mean, what, what's considered?
Your costs were going up.
For you, the cost going up.
Councilman Reardon, there are many factors, uh, that it's a long, long, uh, line item, uh, statement, uh. But generally speaking, it's fuel, it's, uh, met, uh, uh, insurance is going up, uh. Faster than most things. Uh, yeah, regular, just a whole list of things. Uh. By the way, th- this, uh, full detailed analysis is done in conjunction with the County of Amador and their, uh, hired, uh. Company, R3, that analyzes these things. So it, it's, it's thoroughly, uh, vetted, uh, with the county. Uh, but to answer, there are many line items, uh, Mr. Reardon, I mean, uh, we can. Give you a, a copy of the line items. I don't think we have it here tonight. And it may some, may be somewhere in your. Fact, uh, information that you have, but here. Uh, but we did, uh, submit those things and they were vetted, um. And approved.
I have a question with regard to the recycling program and if, I, I don't know the economic impact. Like whether or not you guys actually can sell that and make money off of it, or if there's anything long-term that we could do to make that more robust. And profitable for. You all and then be able to, um, benefit the people in the county.
I'll let General Manager Keller Johansson answer that.
So yeah, unfortunately, the way recycling is done this day, it's commingled. So everything's commingled in one thing. So it's more expensive back in the day when everything was isolated and picked up commodity by commodity. It was much easier and a lot less expensive to process that. But now it's all commingled and then you have to have people sort it and. And, and not commingle anymore. So the challenge is the fact that there's so much cost in processing it now that there's not a lot of money. Once you commingle everything. If it's done out of, it was done from what I understand. By another waste company, basically to save on cost of picking it up. Because you had to have separate compartments for every commodity. If one commodity filled up, then you're basically, you had to go back and. You know, dump the truck. So for convenience and cost effectiveness, everything is commingled now, which is a lot harder because now you've got to process it and separate it. So, and then the general market, uh, ever since 2018 in China soared. The recycle market has never recovered to the extent that it was when China basically shut down and stopped taking in recycling. So it's never really recovered to where it was before, but then you factor in the commingling and there's really not a lot of money in. Residential, everything gets recycled, but it's not a lot of money in residential recycling. Um, so if that makes sense.
Um, along those lines, that's, I know at one point there were state subsidies for counties for, um, recycling efforts. Um, is that still part of your budget?
Not that I'm, not that I'm afraid.
Do we get, um, or do you get state assistance?
I'm not familiar with anything that.
So there's no state assistance?
Yeah, you might know more than I do.
I believe there is a small rebate for, from CalRecycle for curbside recycling.
To help offset costs for sorting or.
I think it's about, I think the, um, amount was about maybe nine or $10,000. An- anything like that is put into, you know, the rate making purposes.
Yeah, I was just curious if that was still.
Yeah. I mean, it's not, it's, it's not a lot, but it's a little.
And then would it ever be feasible to go back to the sorted recycling and. Um, also then I wonder whether or not the cleanliness of what goes into it has any effect on the resale. Or I don't know what you call it, but how much it's worth.
Yeah, I, I mean, uh. I, I don't, for, for efficiency wise, I think rates would actually go up. If we had to go back to single commodity, single stream commodity, just because of the fact of. The difficulty of picking it up. And then also now all the processing centers are. Designed for commingled recycling versus single stream. So back in the day, they act, they actually had. Single stream processing and now it's all commingled. So they, to go backwards would mean revamping a lot of things, which unfortunately it's. It's a, it's a cleaner way of doing things, but unfortunately for cost of inefficiency, everybody's moved to sync what they call single stream.
Thank you.
And I think single stream meant a lot more people recycled than, than when we sorted.
Yeah, I just wonder how much actually gets recycled.
If there's no other questions from the council, I'll open the public hearing. Uh, we don't need a motion to open the public hearing and there's no public here to comment. Um, Tom, did you want to report out on any protests?
Uh, we received 11 protests.
In that case, I'd hear a motion to close the public hearing?
So move.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of, uh, closing the public hearing? Tom, will you do a roll call?
Sure. Do we need to, to vote to close the public hearing?
Uh, yeah.
Okay. Uh, Councilmember Seer?
Aye.
Mayor Councilman?
Aye.
Councilmember Feist?
Aye.
And Councilmember Reardon?
Aye.
Okay. Help me out if I'm doing this wrong, Derek, but in that case, there were not, um, enough protests to, um, not allow. Uh, approving this. Resolution. So in that case, we can have further discussion or I'd hear a motion to approve the resolution.
I just want to be clear that, um, we will have an opportunity to vote. On the future, um, rate increases, um, for new year rate one, two, and three.
That's my understanding. They'll be based just on the RRI and, but they will come to us. They just won't be in a 218 process. Tom, Derek, is that right?
That's correct. That's correct.
So we, we will get them.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? Dan, Susan?
No, with, with that in mind, I would, uh, move to approve the resolution, including both aspects. Um, as Derek mentioned during his introduction.
There's a motion and a second. Tom, will you do a roll call, please?
Yep. Councilmember Reardon?
Aye.
Councilmember Feist?
Aye.
Councilmember Seer?
Aye.
And Mayor Councilman?
Aye.
Passed 4 to 0.
Okay. Thanks guys for coming and answering questions. All right. Um, this isn't on our agenda. Because we had a, a brief agenda, a truncated agenda because we were having a special meeting today, but I'm going to go ahead. And ask if anyone has a mayor council member report? Dan?
I do not.
Susan?
Yeah, just that the, um, increase for the assessment to lodging in the county. Was not on the agenda for Board of Supervisors, so that will be, um, on an upcoming agenda.
Bummer. Did a bunch of people show up?
Yeah, I guess the supervisors weren't aware they need to have a vote on it. So I'm not exactly sure. How that went down.
Um. I think that they had, uh, sent out, you know, a lot of information to have people show up and support it. So I hope that when it is rescheduled.
It's at the next meeting. They did, they did email out a notice telling people it was rescheduled.
Thanks, Susan. Anything else? Julia?
Um, we had a VPAC meeting on, um, last week. And Tom and I are still discussing some of the details, so I have nothing to present at this point.
Okay, I have nothing. Uh, city attorneys report, Derek?
Nothing.
Future agenda item?
And I.
Anyone? Julia? Future agenda item?
Um, not this time.
Susan? Dan?
Oh, thank you.
Just wanted to note, uh, if you're ready to adjourn. That we're going to move the priority planning meeting hopefully to the next council meeting date, which should be February 14th. At 3 o'clock.
Tuesday, right?
Tuesday after President's Day. So we will attempt to do the priority planning at 3.
What day does that?
February 18th. And then we will have, um, a regular meeting again at 6 o'clock that day. So. It'll be basically a retry of today.
Same schedule, different day. Okay. And how long, again, do we think that will run? Right up till 6 or?
Yeah, we, and, uh, we'll arrange to have some food and hopefully we'll take at least a small break in between the two meetings.
I, I do recommend a, a small break to debrief.
Okay, um, am I dropping anything off of the? Nope. Okay. Uh, I believe that leaves us to adjourn.
Thank you.
Get better, Dan.
I will.